I'll call to order the special call city council meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. President Chambers, our all council members except Mr. Mattney, I'm sure he's with visitors upstairs. And personal issue. Appreciate you being here. The first order of business will be our invocation and pleasure of allegiance in the month of August. In our rotation, Ms. King is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those who wish to pray, please bow with me now. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening thankful for all that you have bestowed upon us. As we go into our meeting tonight, we pray for strength and guidance, and may we be assured of your presence with us. It's in your holy name I pray, amen. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Those in attendance in the audience as well as via Zoom, welcome. Appreciate you being here this evening as we attempt to handle some business in a special call session. I would ask council for a motion to enter an executive session for economic development matter. I would ask the chair of economic development, it's not here right now. Would someone like to take that?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to consider economic development matter related to Project G T, as allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four dash seventy eight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Craylon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second in stereo from Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Black. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, six oh, we will move into the executive session upstairs in the conference room. So, audience, Ms. Caitlin, if you'll just wait on us, you know the drill. Thank you. We are returning from an executive session. Would someone like to report out, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at seven twenty-three, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Also let the records reflect that Mr. Mattney was present with us in the executive session. He was hosting our guests, so we appreciate him doing that. While we actually took care of the folk down here, so let the records reflect that. Um, next item on the agenda is possible action on the items discussed in executive session. Council, is there any request? All right, hearing none, the next section is public comment. That would be anything but executive session. You don't understand what's, we couldn't tell you. No comments there. Council request. Here none, motion on adjournment from the special call city council meeting.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Mattney, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Craylon, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned for special call session at approximately seven twenty-five P M. Let everybody change their notebooks and we'll get ready for our regular. Okay, thank you. I will call to order our regular scheduled city council meeting on Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at approximately seven thirty P M. Again, I apologize for delay, but we were in executive session and presentations took a little bit longer than normal. We're, uh, I'll get that in a second. Our invocation, our pleasure of allegiance, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those who wish to pray, please bow your heads with me now. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and work for our great city. Father, as school starts back this week, we ask that you be with the parents and students as they navigate through yet another uncertain times and an uncertain year. We ask you for direction and for guidance. We ask you for your almighty grace and peace, and may we accomplish these goals that are pleasing in your eyes. I say this prayer in your name, amen. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our public to our special, our regular called council meeting tonight, along with those that may be attending via Zoom. Appreciate you dialing in also. Let us recognize, we appreciate you having our Greenville news reporter, Ms. Harrington with us tonight. I'm retrieving time reporter, Ms. Scott Crosby. Appreciate you being here, uh, along with our department heads who are present with us in chamber tonight. Let the records reflect that all members of council are present, along with our city administrator, Mr. Madden, and our city clerk, Ms. Miller. Appreciate everyone being here. Along, we have a special guest, the mayor, Scott Messenger, from the town of Reevesville. Here with us tonight, appreciate you attending. Uh, we're going to demonstrate to him the way to handle a council meeting. So, everybody help. Yeah, by being late, that's not the way to do it. So we will hear from the regulars about that, so sorry about that. Our next item on our agenda is our proclamations and presentations. There are none. Next agenda item would be reading and approval of the minutes. We have a minutes of the city council meeting of July the nineteenth, along with four special call council meetings, uh, on the dates listed on the agenda. Everyone should have had a chance to read those minutes ahead of time. So if there's any, there's not an objection, I would entertain a motion for approval of all five minutes, uh, with the appropriate titles.
So moved.
Mr. Mattney, motion for approval of the minutes as submitted before us. Uh, is there a second? There's a second for Mr. Craylon. Is there any discussions, changes, adjustments, recommendations on the various minutes that you have previously read? Mr. Black?
I'll obviously the second meeting, I've been saying for vote on that since I was not present, I was out of town on a family vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Black. All right, let's solve, well, since there's an adjustment there, we'll hold a special call council meeting on August the second as a separate motion. We will handle the city council meeting of July the nineteenth, special call to July the twenty-second, special call to July the twenty-seventh, and special call to July the thirtieth, uh, the minutes as submitted and previously read. All the-
Mayor, I would need to rescind my original motion for all of the meeting minutes to be considered at one time. So I rescind that and instead move that we approve July nineteenth, twenty-second, twenty-seventh, and thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Craylon?
Second.
Second. Thank you. So for those four dates and the minutes as submitted, any uh, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, those four date minutes are approved as submitted, Ms. Miller. Uh, then council's pleasure on special call council meeting on August the second.
Motion to approve me, um, the minutes from August second as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Kings, there's a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Uh, records should have already reflected, Mr. Black will not vote as he was not present for the August second meeting. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the minutes are approved as submitted, six zero. All right. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This public comment is for any item on the agenda. I failed to read that earlier, let me give that to you. So our first public comment session will be for any person, uh, willing, wishing to address the council. Uh, that's what the law was for that I alluded to a little earlier, uh, as well as we'll check with Zoom to see if anyone is there for an item on the agenda. Presentations will be limited for the length of our agenda night, we'll limit it to three minutes. To speak, uh, we would ask that you would approach the podium and state your name and your address and the item that you wish to speak on for council. Probably, we ask for proper decorum preserved by members of council, our speakers and our audience. Uh, I'll try to keep control of the meeting and require the speakers and the audience to refrain from abusive and profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protest, or other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of business at the meeting. Personal attacks on council members, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. It is inappropriate to use a public hearing or the public comment here for the purposes of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on the request of the mayor will be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium or for removal of any disruptive person from the meeting at the direction of the mayor. All right, so that'll apply to our both comment sections. Our first one is for any item on the agenda. No one has signed up on the roster for agenda items. Mr. Madden, is there anyone on Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, uh, no one on, on Zoom has indicated that they would like to speak with this public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Next, uh, agenda item will be a report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Uh, Mayor, members of council, uh, this month I do not have a report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, report from standing committees, our finance and policies, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did actually not hold a mini-meeting last month, but we have a number of things coming in the pipeline for the following month. Uh, so for tonight, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public safety, Ms. King?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to mention that we had a few events, um, already this month, including National Night Out, which was a huge success, so, um, a shout out to all of our public safety folks, fire police, um, public works. I mean, it was just a whole city group effort, um, and it was a great event, so thank you for that. Um, it's my understanding the fire department was hosting a hot dog cookout last week, um, and I know everybody enjoyed that. And lastly, um, just wanted to mention that public schools will be starting back tomorrow, and all three of our schools are in the city limits. And, um, Mr. Miller's already let me know, or Chief Miller, excuse me, that, um, as they always are, they will be out and making sure all of our children are safe tomorrow. So if you're in those school zones, you might want to slow it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. A little bit worse, Mr. Craylon?
Nothing at this time.
Economic planning and development, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first and foremost, uh, Mr. Broad, if you're watching, you know you're, that you're still in our thoughts. Big tip of the hat to the community development department for another outstanding, uh, Beach and Fridays music series. I hate that it ended so quickly. Ten Fridays is not enough, and I think that that was the sentiment from everybody I talked to. But thanks not only to community development, but for the police department, the fire department, public works, recreation, all of the volunteers, because without that staffing, those events would not be possible. It really is a team effort, uh, to put that on and make it such a great event. So thanks to all of the staff here at the city.
Building codes, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say that Malden is growing and the building inspections for July were up and residential permits were up. The, uh, new home permits were up, and we had seven new businesses open in July.
Ms. Kuzner? Recreation, Mr. Black?
Nothing to report at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Uh, next item on the agenda is unfinished businesses. There are no ordinances for second reading or unfinished business. Uh, we'll get to new business ordinances on first reading. Uh, Ms. Miller, would you introduce that?
Our first ordinance tonight is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately one acre located at two twenty-seven East Butler Road and providing an effective date. Um, and this property is at the intersection of Old Mill Road and East Butler Road.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Building services, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at this time, there's, uh, no, um, no commercial, um, business looking at this property, but they want to go ahead and, and rezone it to C two, general commercial. So at this time, I would, uh, make a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner, I have a motion, is there a second? I have a second, Mr. Black, any discussion?
Mayor, just for information, those that have been around a good while like you have, uh, this property that Sam and Mary Sue Barber live in on the corner to, uh, all the Rova Home Park across the C P S drugstore, the corner of Old Mill and Butler, just location purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Actually looking at somebody's been here longer than I have, but I won't. We all remember, we do remember Ham Barber, who was a former mayor, said, well, do that. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other comment, this was actually proposed to the planning commission. They held a public hearing and it was voted seven oh to recommend approving this property. This change. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to rezone the property at two twenty-seven East Butler Road from our, from R twelve residential C two, general commercials, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Next ordinance is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately twelve point five acres located at Ashmore Bridge Road and Fort Shoals Road and providing an effective date, and this is part of the Arden Woods subdivision.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also from building services, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, um, right now, most of the property is R M, and there is a small section that is C two. They're wanting to take that C two and move it to the other side of Ashmore Bridge Road and expand the C two on that side. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Black. Is there any discussion on this?
Craylon? Real quick, we're, uh, in this swap, essentially, we're gaining additional commercial property, correct? Right?
Well, you're, you're expanding on, uh, the other side of Ashmore Bridge, but, uh,
But the acreage, we're getting a little more acreage in commercial, that swap, correct?
Yes. Correct, yes.
Yes, correct.
Anything Mr. Deerhope needs to expand on that one? No? I think it does expand the commercial side and moves it to the other side and also on the side of originally commercial. It's going to go falling into that residential section there. There's also, they're going to keep that for green space, and it reduces the total number of homes that will be built on that site. So it, uh, is an interesting proposition. I might have stole you thunder, Mr. Reynolds.
You did, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other discussion? Anything else? I was picking it, Mr. Reynolds.
Oh.
Any other discussion?
Well, I would like to point out that by doing this, it would better accommodate the marketability for the out parcel for a grocery store or a small retail center. Which would be good for the, uh, residential.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. No other comment? All those in favor of the rezoning and relocation request of the property out on Ashmore Bridge Road and Fort Shoals Road? Say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next items come out of our standing committee items, uh, first one will be G I S services. Ms. Miller, you got anything to add to that?
I have the consideration and action on assignment of contract with Avignon for the continued G I S services for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That would be, Mr. Craylon?
This is basically, sorry. It's basically a contractual change of names. Uh, the contract for the G I S services remains the same, same, uh, Ts and Cs. It's just changing the name from, uh, Two Springs to Avignon. That's, it's, but there's no change to the contract. So, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, um, approve the, the, this act, I'm sorry. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to make a change to the contract for G I S services, uh, from the name of Two Springs to Avignon, to the new, for the new contract.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon, is there a second?
Second.
The second, Ms. King. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion for approval of the assignment of the contract with Avignon to provide G I S services for the city, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. Next item is acceptance utility tax credit, Ms. Miller?
This is consideration and action on the acceptance of utility tax credits totaling one hundred thousand dollars for the access point speculative manufacturing industrial building.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Economic development, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor, move for approval.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion acceptance expenditure of the hundred thousand dollar utility tax credit? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller?
Next is consideration and action on approval of receipt and expenditure of a three hundred thousand dollar Brownfield grant.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Economic development, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor, for approval of the three hundred thousand dollar EPA Brownfield grant.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Craylon, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion of approval of three hundred thousand dollars of of the Brownfield funding expenditure of the grant funds? Say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Thank you. Cultural Center. Yes, Ms. Miller?
This is consideration and action on acceptance of the one hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollar grant from the South Carolina Department of Parks, Recreation and Tourism's twenty twenty undiscovered South Carolina Grant Program and thirty thousand dollars appropriated from Greenville County Council for the cultural center renovations and allocation of an additional not to exceed ninety thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars for renovations to the restrooms at the cultural center.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also, economic development, Mr. Mattney, this appears to be two parts.
Thank you, Mayor, move that, uh, we accept one hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollar grant from S C P R T, uh, and thirty thousand dollars from Greenville County Council for phase two of cultural center renovations.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon.
Sorry.
I have a motion for Mr. Mattney and a second for Mr. Craylon. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion for the acceptance of the one hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollar grant from South Carolina Parks Recreation, thirty thousand dollars from Greenville County Council, and the allocation of additional not to exceed ninety thousand, five hundred seventy-six.
That's, that'd be a different motion there.
That's going to be different, okay. Good, got it, all right. So back to the approval, motion to approve of the motion for the acceptance of the grant money, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. Back to you, Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, move that, uh, we allocate an amount not to exceed ninety thousand, five hundred dollars, five hundred seventy-six dollars for renovations to the restrooms at the cultural center, coming from H and A, I believe, Mr. Madden?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Coming from H and A, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Kuzner? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to point out, all of those grants were in the last budget, we're approving the acceptance of the funds into the city, correct?
Mr. Reynolds, that, that's correct. The, the action that council is taking tonight, accepting and allowing for the expenditure of those funds in this upcoming, in the current fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Madden, I just wanted to make sure everybody was understanding that we weren't spending money. We were actually receiving a bunch, so these are all good things.
Yeah, the previous motion that carried was for the actual receipt and the expenditure of the grant money.
That was for public clarification, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other clarifications or discussions on the motion before us for the allocation of the H and A funds? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. The, back to you, Ms. Miller.
Next is a resolution to adopt an update to the Greenville County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, that's building services, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would move to approve the resolution, resolution to adopt an update to the Greenville County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner, is there a second? Second for Mr. Black. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion for the hazard mitigation plan, the resolution, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, all the, those. Motion carries seven zero. On the right, thank you, not bad. Okay, next item, Ms. Miller?
Next item is consideration and action on inmate labor agreement with the South Carolina Department of Corrections for the provision of inmate labor.
Ms. Miller, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, some background on this. So, as most of you know, the city engages with, um, Department of Corrections for inmate labor, especially to assist with our, um, public works department and trash pickup, and they also do some work around, um, in recreation in our parks. So during COVID, we were unable to use inmate labor. So what this is tonight is just an inmate labor agreement, um, which would allow the city to engage with the inmates again if the city so chooses. Um, I'd also like to add, there has been conversation between, well, within council that, um, we may or may not want to go this avenue in the future. So this isn't saying that we're going to start using inmate labor immediately. It's just saying that we would have the ability if that's what the city so chooses. If that makes sense. So, um, at this time, I would make-
Mr. Madden, needs some clarification.
Yeah, um, Ms. King, members of council, uh, for this request, uh, what, what staff would ask is that council approve the agreement via resolution that was, uh, distributed earlier with, uh, three minor changes to the agreement. The first change is rather than the agreement being between Department of Corrections and the City of Malden Public Works to be, uh, between the City of Malden and Department of Corrections. Second change is rather than being executed by the city administrator, the, the contract would be executed by the mayor. And then the third minor change to the agreement is the termination date, rather than, that it being, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, that it would be August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And so those minor changes along with the approval of the resolution, uh, is what's being requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution for a resolution approving an agreement with the South Carolina Department of Corrections.
Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Mattney. Okay, I have a motion and a second for a resolution of approval, is there any discussion? And, Mr. Crayton?
Because this is still being discussed with some of the council members here, as far as whether we do, do we want to do this moving forward? I'd like to invite the public and have them help me to contact me and ask, and I'd like to hear your opinions on what your feelings are towards this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did this come out of Public Works or?
It's actually coming out of Public Safety.
Okay.
People's in their committee and they forwarded to council.
I didn't see that on me. Okay, thank you.
There was a discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve a resolution, approving an agreement with South Carolina Department of Corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. Ms. Miller?
Last standing committee item is a request to approve a construction firm to serve as the construction manager at risk to provide pre-construction and construction management services for a new fire station headquarters and police department substation in Malden.
Ms. Miller, definitely Public Safety. Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Miller. You said it all in that statement. So I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the construction manager at risk contract to Cloverleaf Construction.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion aborting the bid for the CMAR contract to Cloverleaf Construction, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries seven zero. That's the last item we had before us of, on our standing committee agendas. The next item comes to us for consideration as committee of the whole. So I would ask council to consider a motion.
Mayor, I move that we consider this item informally.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. There is a motion to consider the next item informally, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. King, any discussion? All those in favor of consideration of the next item and views it a lot, and the informal method, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, we will consider ourselves as a committee of the whole to consider item J. Ms. Miller?
This is consideration of an ordinance related to the Fire Department.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. You want to try that?
I could jab at this one, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what you have on page 125 in your packets, council, is the ordinance itself. I'm going to make the motion and then during discussion, if there's any questions pertaining to, there will be one item, and Mr. Madden can address this, I guess. Let me make, yeah, well, after I make the motion. On page 128, there's one item that's going to be changed before second reading pertaining to the earnest money. So at this time, I'm going to make the motion to approve an ordinance on first reading, authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the City of Malden pertaining to the new fire station headquarters.
Second.
We're open to discussion. This was a toss-up between, is it going to be Public Safety or Economic Development? I think it's good for both, and it could have come from either one type thing. And I believe this motion is the property in the existing
Yes, thank you. As I said that, I was like, that's, it's the existing headquarters.
We're good.
Thank you.
Got that straight, and
Yes, Mayor, members of council, under, and the agreement that will be attached to the ordinance is authorized, is being authorized to not, under the earnest money, what's listed is an amount of $5,000. That should actually be $2,500 rather than so that change will be made and reflected prior to the second reading of this ordinance and contract.
King, did you, you prepared, you'd like to give maybe an idea that if this carries forward and we approve it, we are not kicking the Fire Department out tomorrow?
Right. Yeah, so for clarification, this is for the potential sale of the current headquarters. As most of you are aware, we will be building a new headquarters down the road.
Thank you, yes, down West Butler will be the new one. And instead of the fire trucks just circling the blocks for the next year, they'll still be able to use that one. There's various items in the purchase agreement to allow them to continue to stay there. Do we get our new fire station built and fully implemented and moved into? So looking forward to that. So this is someone who's very interested in that location, that once they do vacate. That, so anyway, with that said, me being wordy, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approval of the ordinance on first reading, authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in City Malden, i.e. the existing fire station and headquarters. You say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Okay. Heard that correct. Okay, all right, so the motion carries six one. Correct, that's Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Miller. All right. That, we are now back to public comment. And this would be for any item that you wish to bring before this council for the good of the City of Malden. Everything I read earlier still is in force. So with that being said, the only person that has signed up, and I just I can't remember it. Yeah, there it is. Mr. Kirkland. You would come to the podium, state your name and your address. Please feel free to address it in, there's three minutes.
Private Kirkland, 42, King Kirkland, Malden, South Carolina.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Mayor, you know, you can set it on my say nothing. You've had three minutes. Pick up, all you get to do is come by and say nothing. Uh, you send another representative, you wouldn't show. And I think he come back and told you, I got y'all. He just wasn't sent to the jury. He said, you got it. How long would it take y'all, once I put something on the table, to bring it here? It's been three months. Someone, I'm going to say something to three of y'all. Support it, that everybody should have. Y'all don't call a general session unless it's some law, y'all can go to some other. See, it might be anyone that causes you emotional disturbance. You can go from mental abuse, it's up to five years. I am a lawyer, I get on those. And I want to know next time, what are kind of taxes y'all think it should be? I'll forefile this double taxation, in fact. I won't let you say that. Drop them out, and the moon come one thing so the people know it's paying. Double taxation. And I can't wait. Calling the chief on vacation. When you call me? Uh, let's see. Oh, yeah. Oh, I was going to ask you, the public comments, I want to raise, do you get three minutes ready to?
You have three minutes from the time you started talking, talk about anything you want to.
I know, but I got there for public comments, where I got three minutes ready to during public comments?
On the first public comment? If you had had an item on the agenda and spoke to there, yes, you would have had that if you signed up for the general public comment. You have it there.
I wanted to speak. What y'all think about Donald Trump? I voted for him, I can't believe he raped women, wouldn't let blacks live in a parliament. 26 women got him for it. Saw one woman's head, like I'm telling what I can do. She's suing him for one billion dollars. I don't know what you're going to get. You make God angry, things happen. And I don't know how long it's going to take, get alcohol out of bars or something. If you're without you. I don't hate nobody, I hate witness. Friend, prophet, you can mock me all you want to. Weird, we don't lie, we have visions, we communicate with God, he speaks to us. And see, God has heard the cries of his people. And it says, for lack of the people, vision, people perish. He gets visions. I have a vision, this place is going to be cleaned up. And so without you. I'm on you, I don't, three of y'all supported that. We're going, let me, somebody better call me and find out why these things are more like that.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland, your time is up, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is council concerns. Here none, what I hear on adjournment? Oops, sorry.
We have seen over the past several weeks, a real rise in COVID infections. We have seen the hospitals become more and more taxed. Certainly, there is no one that can force anyone to become vaccinated. However, I would strongly urge anyone who has not been vaccinated to consider it, to do the research. If you want to talk to somebody who has been vaccinated and hear my story, I'm more than happy to share it. But I would urge anybody who has not gotten the shot to at least consider it and then weigh the information and get vaccinated. Thank you.
One else? Here none, what I hear on adjournment?
Some move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, approximately 8:05 PM.